All right, we will call to order this regular board meeting of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Tracy, may we have a roll call, please?
Carrie Ellis.
Here.
Justin Thomas.
Yes.
Scott Hoff.
Yes.
Tara Bowman.
Here.
Cory Jones.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
Here.
With all seven members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. The mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue, inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The agenda this evening, questions, comments, looking at action item B 1 through 10, does the board wish to handle those as one and then we can break apart, any needs?
Yes.
Everybody good with that? Okay, sounds good.
Were you guys keeping on the, keeping that short-term borrowing?
We need to strike. Okay, so make a, okay, so.
I guess we'll strike item D from the agenda due to not having up-to-date information from the bank.
So action item D will be.
Removed.
Removed from the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, any other changes, additions, subtractions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public comment, nice crowd this evening, anyone wish to speak up? All right, we will quickly move on then to board monitoring, and it is a pleasure to see so many people here, and Mrs. Schroeder came to the board several months ago with an opportunity to recognize those companies that sponsor our school district and help our school district with not just local but statewide recognition. So it was really neat as a board member to get a magazine in the mail from the School Board Association just the other day with our district recognizing your companies, and we are so grateful for what you do, and we know we couldn't be here without you, and we are extremely thankful, and please do accept our deepest thanks. With that, Stephanie and Dr. Bloom.
Thank you very much. The 2018 Wisconsin Association of School Boards Business Honor Roll recognizes businesses and school districts for working together for the benefit of students and communities in Wisconsin. As Mr. Hoff had indicated, the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is very, very fortunate to have the support of many individuals and organizations in our community, and we are very appreciative of your support. This evening, we have the opportunity to recognize four companies that, or organizations, that have supported the district in the past. They are Generac Power Systems, Fort Healthcare, Standard Process, and Pleasant Valley Acres. And I have a little vignette to read about each of those that the board chose to honor and recognize this year. Generac Power Systems. Generac Power Systems has generously supported our district in a variety of capacities. This recent partnership has provided financial and educational support for our students and families. Kelly Davis, Community Relations Program Manager for Generac, has been instrumental in forging these opportunities. Several engineers from the company led engaging and hands-on activities during the Eagle Elementary STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics Afternoon. Another Generac professional read a favorite book to students during the school's annual Dear Drop Everything and Read event. Generac has purchased gifts for area families during the holiday season, they have graciously sponsored our district newsletter and calendar. Additionally, the organization has donated funds for our annual Athletic Booster Club golf outing, project graduation, and track resurfacing project. This year, the corporation also provided two substantial scholarships for graduating seniors. So this time, we'd like to recognize Generac Power Systems. Mr. Hoff? Thank you again. Fort Healthcare. Fort Healthcare has recently become a valued business partner for our school district. The pediatric wellness team from the local healthcare provider hosted a health pep rally for both Eagle and Palmyra Elementary Schools. The program focused on three issues related to healthy choices: play more, eat right, and push away the screen. The event shared those messages through age-appropriate fun and games. The company also lent their rail yard fitness system to both schools. This indoor obstacle course was utilized during physical education class and incorporated a whole workout disguised as fun. Fort Healthcare additionally sponsored and staffed two free open gyms for public use to utilize the apparatus. The organization also supports the district in a financial sense by sponsoring our district newsletter, calendar, and athletic programs. Palmyra Eagle has also been fortunate to successfully contract our athletic trainer and district nurse with Fort Healthcare for multiple years. Fort Healthcare.[448.84][448.84](applause) And I'm sure Lisa would remind all of us, it's cold and flu season, so get your flu shot.[487.44][487.44](laughter) Which I did on Monday. Standard Process. Standard Process has been a longstanding partner with the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. The large local business annually gifts funds to the Powers Memorial Library in Palmyra to be used at the Scholastic Book Fair held at Palmyra Elementary, which supports the reading curriculum at that school. The company frequently organizes school supply drives for the elementary schools. Standard Process provides significant financial support for our district in several areas. Our high school athletic complex and Palmyra Elementary Playground were enhanced by contributions from the organization. Sizable donations are made to the high school project graduation event, and several valuable scholarships are presented to graduating seniors. Our district is fortunate to have the corporation continually sponsor our district newsletter. Standard Process also generously sponsors multiple district families in need during the holiday season. Standard Process.[553.16][553.16](applause) Our last recipient and recognized group, I don't know, is anyone, Tom or Tracy, not here?
Pumpkin patching or something, I don't know.
All right, I will still read, however, our acknowledgement of their support for the district. Pleasant Valley Acres has been a key supporter of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District for many years. This local farm is a tremendous asset to the district's Future Farmers of America program. The company regularly offers an apprenticeship opportunity for high school students. Educational field trips to the farm are enjoyed by many of our elementary classes. Tom and Tracy Novak, the owners, generously donate pumpkins and other goods for the Palmyra Elementary Monster Mash and additional district events. The couple has also brought several of their livestock to our FFA-sponsored petting zoo and agricultural adventure day, and taught students about the animals and life on the farm. Pleasant Valley Acres also generously sponsors our district newsletter and calendars on a regular basis. Pleasant Valley Acres, we'll be sure to get.[646.29][646.29](applause) So again, just on behalf of our students' families, our faculty members, thank you very much to the organizations that are present this evening, we very much appreciate your ongoing and continued support of the good work that we're doing in the school district, so we thank you very much.
Mr. Jones, you have tough act to follow. Committee reports, building and grounds.
I met this evening, essentially found out that we were awarded round two of the safety grant, which totals $44,000 to be put towards a number of different items, cameras and training for staff to, one of the main focuses, I guess, is the mental health aspect and being able to recognize signs of troubled kids in school, or signs that they, they might harm somebody or something or whatnot, so there's going to be some funds there as far as training staff on that. Let's see, Dr. Bloom is now on committee in regards to the safety grant and throughout the state, so hopefully he's got an inside track to get us every dime we can get. But also, one other thing that Dr. Bloom mentioned too, in regards to getting awarded our second round, was just the great support from both of the local police departments in Eagle and Palmyra to assist with obtaining anything that we needed for that, so thank you to them. And let's see, Rich stopped in, looked at his list of big items, lot of items, as far as maintenance and everything that needs to get done, at this time, I guess, there are, like I said, quite a list and no funds to take care of any of them, so, and that was it.
All right, thank you. Finance committee, please.
We met earlier this evening as well, for the most part, Sharon reviewed the budget for the annual meeting, again, the final numbers will be in next Monday, so then we will have the final, final version ready for the meeting. Referendum preparations, a few things that we will probably put on the meeting for next week after the annual meeting to discuss. As far as how we want to present, the best way in the final numbers for prepayment and any other things that we can do ahead of time. We didn't briefly discuss the short-term borrowing and putting that off, waiting on the bank's paperwork, but that no changes to what we've done previously, so that will stay the same. And I believe that is it.
All right, thank you, and then public relations, and I'll give you.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We met a little bit earlier tonight, Stephanie updated us on the WASB honor roll, which we spoke about earlier, and it had all of the wonderful businesses here, and we appreciate their support very, very much. Also touched base on the November newsletter, Steph has already gotten the rate cards out for those, 10 of 18 have already responded, so she's got a great response with that already. Hoping to have the newsletter out by mid-November. And then we also talked about possibly having Steph put together a mission statement slideshow to use as a way to publicize our district, publicize our mission statement, and how we live that statement here in the district. And that is all for us.
No, but I wanted to talk about our Curriculum and Policy Committee, even though it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, well, let's sneak that in. Curriculum and Policy, please.
I forgot to add it as an agenda.
Sorry.
Anyway, we did not meet for reasons not to be mentioned, but the agenda was small, and the people that we needed to talk to couldn't make it anyway, so. But I did want to make mention that Kathy and Tori are still doing a phenomenal job on the Curriculum and Policy Committee, and one of the things that we are doing with Laura Leger, how do you say that?
Leger.
Yeah.
Leger.
Leger. She's the new business and education teacher, and she's working with Rocky Shaw Technical College to see if we can offer accounting for dual credit, which I thought was very cool. And then they're looking at possibly purchasing new materials if we can't get in that. Another thing they're working on is developing systems for all the online components that are part of our, now part of our curriculum, which I think is, just feeds into the fact that, you know, we're almost at 100% one-on-one with Chromebooks, because currently math, science, social studies, keyboarding, AP courses, and other student teacher resources are all, all have online components that need to be managed, and Tori and Kathy are doing that as well. New materials are being ordered for the libraries, and there's book fairs happening in both schools in the next two weeks too, which is something that we can all visit, and I think that's a great opportunity for our classrooms to get more books too by getting points with the book fair and sales at the book fair, and so I really like promoting the book fair. So if you want to go to the book fair and buy some books, that'd be good. That's all I got.
Sounds good.
Thank you for letting me slide that in.
Sure. Administrator's reports, Sharon?
No.
Nick, anything else? Good? Homecoming week was a success?
Great.
Thumbs up all the way around? Sounds good.
That's right.
That's right. All right, the consent agenda is handled as a singular.
Awesome.
What?
Halftime was awesome.
It was.
Very.
All right, the consent agenda is handled as a singular motion and vote? Do I have a motion to a? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Oh, wait.
Please.
I have one thing.
Of course.
The Marcus tickets, just going back to fundraisers, have we talked about maybe making sure schools aren't doing the same fundraiser at the same time? Or are we just going to stay on that completely?
My understanding is Eagle Elementary is going to be running the Marcus Theater the same time as the middle school, and then also band might be running as well. Oh, no, they're doing something else, sorry. I thought at one time we tried to have the schools stay away from doing the same fundraisers at the same time, just because you're hitting such a small pool of people to begin with.
I do have a calendar out there with all the fundraisers on there, once you guys approve them. So I cannot control, though, if the administrators check that Google Calendar or not. But I do have it out, they do have access to it.
Do they have access to the calendar?
To who?
Organizations.
No.
So it really is...
If they are employees, they do. They're the ones that are the first approvers of it.
But as far as seeing that calendar and knowing when to not, what fundraisers are out there, would it be the building administrators that need to be responsible for that?
As of right now, yes. Eagle PTO did, you guys did approve last spring for them to do a Marcus Theater ticket fundraiser this time of year. The one that the middle school PTO is doing has been a standing every year. They've done this for I don't know how many years. So... I can share that calendar with you guys, definitely. Yep, I'll share it with you guys.
All right. All those in favor of the hearing, everybody's good? Okay, super. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Special thanks, as always, to the Palmyra Eagle Athletic Boosters for the donation towards the huddle subscription and the high jump pit. Thank you to the, for the fundraising and the donation. Action item A, consider approval of the second reading of new policy 2271.01, Start College Now program.
Motion to approve second reading of new policy 2271.01, Start College Now program.
All right. Questions, comments about this one? Good? All right. All those in favor of the new policy 2271.01, Start College Now program, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Action items B, 1 through 10, second reading of the revised policies as listed.
Motion to approve second reading of all of those revised policies as listed.
Okay. Anyone have any individual concern or concerns about an individual section, sentence, paragraph, et cetera?
We had one brought up last month that we've made a modification to. And my thanks to C and P committee for their diligence in reviewing those policies. As you can see, there are quite a few of them.
All good? All right. All those in favor of the approval of the second reading of revised policies in lines 1 through 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item C, consider approval of early college credit program choices for spring 2019 as presented.
Move to approve of early college credit program choices for spring 2019 as presented.
Steve, we're all good on this one? Any...
Mrs. Cookstrom reviews these requests with the students. You might recall that this is what used to be the old youth options program, now renamed with the new state budget. Again, there's a cap on the number of credits that a student can take at 18. She would have also then made sure that none of these students would have exceeded that based upon your approval this evening.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Both those students have requested to take the same three courses. And what happens for our students is they do registration in reverse order, so they would actually even be after college incoming freshmen, so they have to wait to see what's left, which is why oftentimes students will make multiple selections in the event that one course they really want to take isn't available by the time they get to register.
Any other questions?
Are we also doing this through Carroll or is Jeff White...
Any post-secondary institution, it could be Carroll, Carthage, you know, any, I think proximity would probably be a determining factor.
We've had CTC in the past, and I think we've even had UW-Waukesha in the past.
So those fall under a different program, but basically the philosophy would be the same. That's now called the Start College Now program.
Oh, that's the first thing. Okay, got it. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the early college credit program choices for spring 2019 as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, and we are on to Dr. Bloom.
Thank you. So a couple of celebrations this week. Thanks and appreciation to each and every one of you on the school board. The week of October 7th through the 12th, the week currently we are in, is Wisconsin School Board Week, so thank you on behalf of everyone in our community for the work that the seven of you do. We appreciate it very much. Next week, food service staff, the week of October 15th to the 19th, are recognized as its National School Lunch Week, so in advance, we thank Annette and her staff for all of the work that they do preparing meals for dissemination to our students and faculty. Homecoming week, as was mentioned, was a huge success. I want to commend our staff members for all of the additional time and effort that they put in. I think our kids had a really good time. I did want to make mention of the fact that apparently an old tradition, which was the bonfire, was renewed this year. A number of parents were very actively involved in that particular process. I did want to acknowledge Mr. Jeff Steinbach for his work and his efforts in creating the fire pit, having the Eagle Fire Department there on hand. Seemed to be a really nice start of a new tradition, I guess, with the bonfire that hadn't been around for quite some time. So kudos to the parents. Again, we rely upon parent support for many of our activities and events here in the district. Mr. Jones did a really nice summary of the second round of the school safety grant, so I won't reiterate that. I think what I will do for the board, however, for next month would be to just prepare a one-page summary of the amounts and what we use the $124,000 total for related to school safety. Was also possibly suggested that perhaps that component maybe be featured in the November newsletter as an item. So I will do that for you. Annual meeting reminder, I know, Mr. Hoff, you'll probably do that in your list of meeting reminders, two weeks from tonight, 7 o'clock, annual meeting. WASB Region 13 meets the following evening, Wednesday, the 24th. At this time, Mr. Hoff is registered to attend. I don't think it's too late if anybody else would care to do so. There is an election for the Region 13 representative. I included in your electronic packet kind of the bios of the three individuals that are seeking that position. I don't know why anybody would want to serve on another board, but there are three at least that do want to do so. So, and as an aside, I would have been traveling to both Rhinelander and Hayward next week, but the WASDA, my organization's regional meetings were canceled in that part of the state due to lack of registration. So I won't be driving three in almost six hours. Thank you.
All right. Anyone have any additional comments or announcements for this evening? All right. Upcoming meetings and events, the annual meeting will be at 7 o'clock Tuesday, October 23rd. Special board meeting immediately following. Curriculum and policy meeting will be at 5:00 PM on Thursday, November 8th. Building and grounds, finance, public relations, and the next regular board meeting will all be on Tuesday, November 13th, beginning at 5:00 and going through the regular board meeting at 7:00. I would now hear a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.